For 2020. The rise for the flag. It's not here.
I got one.
You got one?
I got one.
All right, I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America.
Of America.
And to the republic.
The republic.
One nation.
One nation under God. Justice for all.
Alderman King.
Here, we've put him on.
Okay, Alderman Stowe.
He's muted.
Alderman Phipps.
Here.
Alderman Raslin. Alderman Cassetti.
Here.
Alderman Giannetti.
Here.
Alderman Spigaro.
Here.
Alderwoman Strowman.
Here.
Alderman Yellman.
Here.
Alderman Rivers.
Here.
Alderman Mammon.
Here.
Alderman Schuer.
Here.
Alderman Blackwell. Alderman De Libro. Did I hear that? Did I hear her here? Alderman De Libro.
That was somebody's dog.
No, okay, so I've got 11 present and three absent.
I declare a quorum. Before we go on to the previous minutes, I want to delete one item from the agenda. Do.
Hey, Josh, can I interrupt you one second? I'm really sorry. 8111 you said was Frank?
No, that's actually Blackwell.
Oh, he's there, but he's muted up on the list. Sorry.
So I will change that to 12 present, two absent.
Here, let me see if I can. I'm not sure if, oh, I don't know that I'm the host or not, but so.
Somebody changed them already.
Okay, perfect. So that item, so now we move on to the minutes. We have three sets of minutes and we can do those individually since some may have been absent. The first one is the minutes from the June 9 regular full board meeting last month's meeting, motion to approve those minutes.
Motion.
Motion by Alderman Mammon.
Second by Yellman.
By Cassetti. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Extentions. Okay, thank you unanimously passes. The next one is June 15. That was the public hearing on the budget and our special board of aldermen meeting. Motion to approve the minutes.
I approve.
Motion by Alderman Strowman, second.
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 Alderman Mammon, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close. Stained. And last one is the June 29 special meeting.
Motion.
Motion by Alderman Mammon, second by.
You're all.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close. Stained. Perfect. That's as well. Thank you. All right, so public session. A lot of names. Who in the public wish to speak tonight? Start with the first.
Hello?
Yep, all right, we have one hand up here, John Maloney.
Yes.
Name and address for the public record.
Yes. Next to.
I'm having trouble hearing.
Hello?
All right.
He has a bad connection.
Really? Yeah, that's on his end, though.
Hello, could you hear me?
Yeah, let's try. Start from the beginning.
This is John Maloney. Resident at 7th North Cliff Street, Antonia, Connecticut.
Something North Cliff Street.
Number.
Seventy.
Seventy.
There you go.
Thanks, John.
All right, thank you.
Go ahead, say what you gotta say.
Are we able to, is this where we're supposed to get in line or what? Speak, John, or did you just want to introduce yourself?
I just wanted to register his address.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, you saved an issue later. Thank you. Perfect. So let's move on. End up from. Thingies. I'm muted like Dan.
Hello?
Hello?
Go ahead.
I do. A few weeks ago, John Marino and Sheila O'Malley said that they might be able to assist in writing certain grants. I wanted to ask if that help was still available.
Referring to the two of them. Can you, can you give your address?
What? I'm just asking, what type of grant?
I was going through some of the grants for the city and states further from the final cares act. And I wanted to see if you guys wanted to work something out on helping me write up the grants and I could get something into the grants to get the city more money.
We can, sure, we can always talk later.
All right, I'll send you a message through your email then.
All right, thank you.
Your address?
Twenty six Colony Street Extension Seymour.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else in the public wish to speak tonight?
Yes. Christian Bernard and Elky Roundtree, 61 Garden Street, Antonia, Connecticut.
All right, go ahead.
Well, we wanted to ask one issue, which is, I guess, you know, the question pivots on this. Is there still blight in your eyes in our property?
Which property are you referring to?
61 Garden Street.
Yeah, that's on the agenda for tonight.
Okay, so what do I do? Do I wait to deal with this, or do I speak now about it, or how do we go about this? I'm just asking.
Tony Marino, you want to address that?
This is, yes, this is on later tonight for executive session. And so, sir, you're certainly invited to attend the executive session with the aldermen to explain the situation and have a discussion on the merits of the case. And there is a way to do that through our Zoom technology. So if you just sit tight towards the end of the meeting, maybe around, don't want to be too optimistic, about 7:45, 8 o'clock, you know, we should be at that portion and we'll invite you into the executive session to talk about that particular case.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public wish to speak tonight? Raise your digital hand. Anyone else from the public wish to speak tonight? Second call. Anyone else wish to speak tonight? Third and final call. All right, public session closed. Thank you all. Public official session, Mayor Cassetti, take it away.
Good evening, President Schuer, members of the Board of Aldermen, residents of the great city of Antonia. It's hard to believe that we are halfway through the summer and we're still meeting by Zoom. Business must, still city business must continue, and we are making significant progress despite the unusual conditions. Tonight in executive session, you will be reviewing a purchase and sale agreement to transfer the former SHW property at 35 North Main Street to the city of Antonia for demolition and site prep, were to pave the way for manufacturing expansion and to remove a blighted property in the heart of our downtown. I will point out that this is the first step towards reclaiming the 60 acre piece that conjoins with the Antonia Copper and Brass. Last month, we spoke about the approximately $170,000 grant from Rick Dunn and Chairman O'Leary and the member communities of Nogat Valley Council of Governments that funding will help remediate the SHW site for future demolition. Today, Representative Rochelle announced that we will be receiving a $500,000 Urban Act grant for the demolition of the site. We thank Representative Rochelle and the state for funding a project we have been advocating for quite a while. This is an important project which will clear the way for Rugpad USA to expand and for future ACB demolition. Thank you to our state and federal and local partners for providing a total of over $650,000 in funding that is desperately needed for the site. This board and my administration have made this a priority, but tonight's success would not be possible without the city of Antonia and this board putting skin in the game for working to transfer the ownership and undertake the demolition. Thank you to John Marino and Sheila O'Malley for guiding the process to this point, and thank you to this board for supporting their efforts. You are also seeing dumpsters and construction crews at our ATP and Palmer sites prepping for interior renovations and demolition and beginning the process of building new apartment space for residents and visitors. The 65 Main Street project is moving full steam ahead, and you will hear from Jared Hian and Chief Cota with respect to technology and furniture as Bantam Construction completes the next phase of the new PD station. We are also talking about Alderman, Alderwoman Diane Strowman and others regarding moving forward with plans for the senior center. This progress could not, could only have been achieved by the swift and decisive action of this board, and I thank you for that. Private and public investment has never been more important for our city and the valley as a whole. In Antonia alone, we have been able to secure almost $60 million in grant funds by being at the table, competing and fighting for our city. I say this to everyone, no longer can the valley region be ignored. There is unlimited potential and opportunity for Antonia and the valley waiting to be unlocked with sound leadership and a willingness to move forward with the help of our partners. In this board, we will continue to do everything in our power to improve the city we know and love, and in turn, Antonia and the valley will continue to prosper. Thank you. God bless you all, and God bless the city of Antonia.
Thank you, Mayor. Next up, Corporation Council, John Marino.
Thanks, Mr. President and members of the board. As the mayor just explained, you have before you an executive session tonight, an agreement to transfer the vacant blighted SHW property to the city of Antonia for the purpose of demolition and remediation. This is certainly exciting news, and combined with the announcement of the new funding from the state of Connecticut for the project, it really sets forth an unbelievable opportunity for us. With your approval, this project will proceed this summer. Tonight, we also, however, have some sad news. Michelle Bradshaw has announced that she will be retiring from her accountant position in the finance department to pursue new employment opportunities. Michelle, of course, has been with us for over six years in various departments and was most recently responsible for the city's payroll. So without her, it's arguably that quite literally many of the city's employees would not have been receiving checks for the past several years. So the mayor's office would like to thank her for her excellent service and wish her good luck on her future endeavors. Thank you very much, Michelle. You really can applaud, I guess, over Zoom. It doesn't.
Why not?
Now with, we have a lot of activity overall in the finance department and in finance-related departments. This includes the implementation of new financial software alongside the Board of Ed to make things more accountable and transparent. We have the relocation of our tax and WPCA offices into a single consolidated collections department in the lower level of City Hall. And we also have a new initiative to close out a backlog of building permits with the assessor with an eye towards increasing the grand list for the city and taxpayers. We're also commencing an efficiency review of all of our city contracts with no less than three union agreements negotiated this summer. For this reason, the mayor's office will not be immediately moving ahead with a permanent replacement for the open accountant position left behind after Michelle's retirement. Instead, we're going to use this opportunity to explore the recruitment of a new full-time comptroller or financial administrator to guide the city through this period of change and ultimately better position the city to realize operational efficiencies and savings for our taxpayers. The mayor's office will report back to the board with any updates, and other than that, I'll see you in executive session.
Thank you, John. Next up, Economic Development Director Sheila O'Malley.
Thank you, President Schuer and members of the Board of Aldermen. I'll keep it brief. We did receive funding for SHW, and that's part of, gonna be part of an overall plan to clear and prep a site for Rugpad, but also to continue with that demolition on the next 54 acres as we move along to try to clear more land for development. Again, that's our remaining, that's our large piece of remaining industrial land that we want to develop, and our study will be done shortly. We're just waiting on test pourings for underneath the ground, and that's been delayed a little bit, but we're gonna get back out there and do that, and then we'll have a study to release to you, to the board and to the public, which will tell you a lot more about Antonia Copper and Brass. We so appreciate, appreciate Representative Rochelle's help in getting that funding. Let's see, I think on the horizon is the Riverwalk, which we just got the green light from DOT to advertise that project, so we will be doing so shortly. We are waiting to hear on our million dollar request for build grant funds, and you have on the agenda a resolution for Sustainable CT, which is a program in conjunction with the state of Connecticut and also the Nogat Valley Cog Council of Governments is helping to, helping communities participate, and I'll explain more as we go along. And I think for now, that's it. I want to thank the mayor for not saying anything about a potential tenant coming into the city of Antonia at this time. So happy, we happy we moved right along past that, and perhaps we'll have some, the mayor will have some news at the next Board of Aldermen meeting in that, in that vein. Thank you. Any questions?
All right, thank you. Next up, Police Chief Cota.
Good evening, everyone. I won't keep you long on this. We had a busy Fourth of July, dealt with numerous complaints. It appears every, every local police department dealt with fireworks and noise-related complaints. That has subsided somewhat since then. On the agenda, you're gonna see, the police department has themselves a little list here tonight. I've got two letters regarding police vehicles that we were allotted in the budget, asking for you to take a look at those to allow us to purchase those. And then you're also gonna see two letters related to the new police facility. One will be for the outfitting of the furniture, storage, records, storage for the police department, and the next one will be the technology aspect to include radios, communications, and all the technology portions that we're gonna need to continue this project. As we, as we move through, when we get to those subjects, I'll be glad to answer any questions. Thank you.
Chief, I have a quick question.
Absolutely.
So Derby was able to, I guess, apprehend a bunch of juveniles that have been, I guess, one of them was armed as well, some of the guys who have been checking cars at night or anything like that. Has there been any either crossover with us? Has it, have any of those guys hit Antonia at all, do you know, or?
There is a crossover in multiple towns. We've been working with multiple towns throughout the valley. I don't have every single detail, but yes, we, every time we have something, we reach out to the local towns, and a lot of it is crossover, as you're saying. So our detectives are working with them. Anything that we can link together, we will do arrest warrants for and move forward. As you saw from the press releases, we are dealing with juveniles here, so we'd go through the juvenile court, but I believe it was Beacon Falls or Bethany, I don't remember exactly which one, they made an arrest a couple of weeks ago. There was some relation to possibly some of the, some of our theft, and at Derby, same thing. We are working diligently with agencies to put as much together as we can. So if there are connections or enough proof, we'll do warrants for them.
Second question. I saw something online. Somebody off of Highland, I guess, has some rather spectacular fireworks that are keeping people up at night. What sort of, what is the protocol? Should they just, I guess, maybe just call the police department to lodge the complaint when that stuff's happening?
Yeah, yeah, they should. They should call us as best as they can if they can identify it. We also have the tip 411. If they, if they don't want to leave their name, they can get into the tip 411, and it's anonymous. A lot of times, we get the call. By the time we get there, it may be over. We can't identify the place. As best as they can, if they can give us a number or the color of the house, a description, whatever, we can address it from there. Yes.
Yeah, thanks. Lot of frightened dogs out there, so appreciate that. Thank you.
Chief Carter?
Yes.
Just one last thing. I think some of the Westside Aldermen may have heard these recently. The motorcyclers, mufflers, and fast cars on weekly app has been kind of an uptick again. When you can get some additional cops out there and keep on them. Seems to be around that 10, 11, 12 o'clock hour that they're out there running them loud, and I've gotten a couple complaints this last week along with some parking issues.
Okay.
Yeah, we will. And also, we've been up there, we've run some radar, but I'll make sure the evening shift and the midnight shift are paying close attention up there also.
Thank you, sir. I've had a couple calls recently. Appreciate it.
Okay. Any other questions for the chief? All right, well, we'll probably come back to you later when some of these items are come up. Thank you. All right, move on into finances. Kim here? Kim Di Stefano? Yeah. She's muted, though. Kim?
Yep, I'm here. Thank you.
You're good. Thanks.
Good evening, everyone. It's been quite busy as usual in finance. It's always a very busy department, especially this time of year, but with our new software that we're trying to open the new year with and still trying to work on closing out last fiscal year, along with the news that Michelle is leaving our team at this point, that's quite a loss. The way our department is divided up, we each have a main duty, but we have a lot of other small, very important tasks that need to get done as well. She handles things like insurance and some of the banking. She's known in our office as Magic Fingers because she's always our techy person who can always manipulate the data into whatever we need at that time. So it is a loss for our department and for the city of all, but we do wish her the very best as she moves forward with her new opportunity. So with saying all of that, we appreciate all, everybody's cooperation as we move forward with this new little blip, as we start the new software and the new fiscal years. It's gonna be a little bit slower than usual, I'm sure, but we'll do our best to do what we can. Thank you. And also, I'm on the agenda for a little later because we've got a few more transfer requests that go with the vote ones that we requested last week, but that's later in the meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any questions for Kim other than what we'll discuss later?
Hey, Kim, it's Tony. When will we get some previews or first looks at some of the new reports that are available out of the software?
Right now, today we worked actually on putting in our purchase order requisitions. Everything in this system is very computer-generated. Everything should be held right in the ledger, including even being able to keep copies of invoices.
Oh, good.
Good work today. Yes, it'll be, it'll be, you know, a little time-consuming, especially our first year, but I think as we move forward with this, we're gonna be very pleased with the reports that we get out, and once we can figure out everything that this system can do for us. Right now, today, we started doing purchase order requisitions, turned them into some purchase orders. We're set up to work with a consultant on Thursday to do our first check run using the new system. So that's exciting. It's the next piece that we've been looking forward to working with. So after that, we're gonna be working, looking to at the reports and that type of thing, but right now, there's not much loaded in there except for really the budget. This will be our first check run, so then they'll have some, some data that will be in there, as well as budget books. We're also working on those. I know everybody's anxious to see the new budget books. What we did is we spent a little bit more time this year putting in both the old accounts and the new accounts so that everybody will have an easy reference in one book for the new and the old. Get used to our new account numbers as well.
Are we, Kim, are we, are we running parallel with the old system as well, or are we just, are we fully live with, with the new system?
The new system is live. The hope was to run a couple of months side by side, but as I said, right now, alls that we have is our first check run that we're doing now, so we're just kind of taking one step at a time and learning it as we go along best that we can. It's totally new, but it's exciting. I think it's a definite move forward, but it's gonna take us all the time to get used to it.
No, it does. It does. It does take time to get used to some of the stuff, and you know, that's, that's expected. You know, I was just kind of curious to see some of those other finer points, but thank you for the update.
Okay.
Josh, I have a question, and the question is not so much to Kim, but maybe to Tony. How does the finance committee interact with these both municipal reports and expenditure summary prior to coming to the Board of Aldermen for our approval?
For the finance committee, there is, there's no oversight, obviously. I joined the vote meetings and listened in, but in terms of the finance committee reviewing some of that stuff, that is not occurring just yet. We talked about meeting potentially quarterly from, as a finance team, you know, the finance committee to just do, you know, normal BAU-type business, you know, things, but nothing has been solidified just yet.
Okay, all right, okay. You know where I'm getting, I guess I'm getting to the fact that we have, you know, you guys are on as far as Board of Aldermen, and we, I probably looked towards you guys to say this stuff is okay.
Yep.
Because we're only getting it the last minute. We're getting it the day of the meeting, so we really don't have an opportunity to go through it. So that's why I question.
Well, I will say, a lot, a lot of the aldermen, honestly, a lot, but there was at the meeting, Tony, myself, there was a good handful of aldermen that. I apologize if anyone I missed, but I know I saw three. Yeah, we do look to him for some sage advice.
If anybody has any questions, they could certainly call and ask any one of us about anything on the list.
All right. Any other questions?
I've got one, Mr. President.
Yes.
Kim said the praises heaped upon Mrs. Bradshaw, which I presume I'm entitled to, and she's, she's gonna be a great loss to the department, but I heard John Marino report that he's not going to immediately fill her position. Is that going to impact the productivity of your department, Kim, or are you gonna have to, can you handle it without Mrs. Bradshaw?
Well, Michelle will be with us for one more payroll, and then we'll need to figure out what we do with the payroll after that, but we've been working with Sheila, John, and the mayor for some different options that we have going forward, so hopefully we'll meet maybe tomorrow to talk and see if we can get a plan in place to get us through until the next step, because the payroll will need to be done.
Is Richie still on board as a consultant, Richie Fisher?
Yes, he's still working with us part-time.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, we'll probably have a lot of questions for you later, so we'll move on here. Is Mike De Lassio here, Superintendent of Public Works? See his name, see if he's calling. Mike De Lassio?
Do you want me to try and get him, Josh?
Oh, I don't care. I just.
Do you have, no, do you have questions?
I have a question.
I have no question, but. Want to get a question for him?
Yep, hang on. I believe he said he was gonna be at this meeting, so I don't know.
There's a lot of numbers here that aren't, that are muted, that they're muted.
Yeah.
Are there other public officials here that I missed? Let's see.
We put maybe Mr. Papson on the spot for an update from the voting office to see if there's any, been any updates in terms of what's happening with COVID, the primary and the general election potentially. I don't know, Dave, if that's a bad thing for you.
Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, sure.
So no updates really going on. Sorry if you hear my dogs in the background. No other updates than the fact that absentee ballots have been, or not absentee ballots, absentee ballot request forms have been sent out to every active voter within the city of Antonia. That's being done specifically by the Connecticut Secretary of the State's office. We've had a couple calls in for people that haven't gotten those forms, and there's usually an issue with their voter registration, so we just handle that as they come in. Beyond that, town clerk is supposed to set up an official ballot drop box. It's supposed to be sanitized, you know, kept separate from all the other mail incoming. That way, we can have. All the other mail incoming. That way, we can have those ballots coming in to a specific area. And those ballots are set to begin going out on July 21st. We already put the order in. Beyond that, you know, we're still taking steps in our office to ensure the safety of our election staff as well as the general public. We just got word from Mike DeLassio that we are going to have the hand sanitizer, the touch-free hand sanitizer pumps available at the poll site, so. That was a major relief for us, and then beyond that, we, you know, we still have our PPE. For, again, the election staff and these, they're like, they're like food processing gloves for the general public if they like to use them. So beyond that, no, no real changes, but trying to think if there's anything else. I believe there might be a special session to determine what's going to happen for November's election, but when that happens, I'll let you guys know.
All right, Dave. Thanks. Sorry to put you on the spot.
No worries.
What's the drop dead deadline for someone to decide they want to fill that form out? How late could they wait?
I, I have to get you a specific date on that. I'll check on that for you. Generally, it's usually like the week before the election, though. I know that there's a hard deadline. For any type of voter registration or changes, and that's the day before the election, so hypothetically, if somebody was to come down the city hall. And fill out a form right then and there, and then get their absentee ballot right there, I'm sure that that wouldn't be an issue, but that would be the day before. But again, I'll get you a hard date on that.
All right, thank you.
No problem.
I have Mike, Mike DeLassio, Josh.
Okay.
Anybody have any questions for Mike or want to talk to Mike?
The gravy might have to be.
Hey, Dan, you're not on mute, Dan.
It's a little bit.
Dan King, you're not on mute.
Yeah.
Is Mike there?
Yeah, Mike's on the phone. Mike's on the line. Go ahead. What do you have for him?
I already said I had no questions for him.
Does anybody else have any questions?
I, I have a question. So, hey, hey, Mike, it's Tony. I saw just a quick note that. The, I guess the facility or the grass at Colony, around Colony was mowed recently, and it looks like someone had mentioned it was potentially outsourced. Is there any truth to that? And if so, do you know why it was mowed by somebody else other than the Public Works?
No, definitely not. I had no knowledge of that at all. We would never do any of our parks. You know, damn, I don't like that. No, definitely not. There's somebody went over with their woman, I want to try it out, but the rest of the week did. We didn't hire anybody to do it. We've been keeping up with the parks, actually. The parks are all cut, so.
Okay.
Somebody was over there cutting it. There's nothing that I knew about.
All right, appreciate the clarity, Mike. I guess there was just some, there was, somebody had noted that it looked like it was outsourced to potentially a landscaping company and wasn't sure why. If.
No, definitely not. Not further than my knowledge. I would never hire anybody to our parks. We have three guys out there cutting our parks every day, so our parks are actually kept up pretty well. This time we outsourced different things, not, not, not to do a cut of grass. Actually, that's a violation of the contract anyway, if we could do something like that.
Yeah, figured as much. Okay, thanks, Mike. Thanks for clarifying.
You're, you're welcome.
Anyone else have questions for Mike DeLassio? Public Works. Anyone? All right, glad we had him on the line for Tony.
Thanks, Mike. Thanks, bye.
So ends the public official session. Let's move on to committee reports. We have a motion to pay all bills if found correct.
Make that motion from the finance side?
Motion, second by Alderman Cassetti. Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Extentions. All right, motion passes. Thank you. Do we have any other committee reports? Alderman Yama, do you want to update on the regionalization efforts?
Sure. My microphone, okay, because I know sometimes it's been hinky lately, but.
Much better, Joe. Yeah, much better.
Um, yeah, so we had a meeting, I believe it was the first Wednesday of June where we finally got into some of the substantive discussions. Important piece, we're talking about equalization, which is the, basically the contributions from each community. That's pretty much where we ended. Some agreement there, some disagreement, some agreement to disagree. But we're finally getting into, I would say, the substantive aspects of the report and trying to narrow down the. The possibilities of what a regional school district would look like. So I encourage everybody to come. I believe we have a meeting scheduled for next Monday. At seven on Zoom, and I think we're going to try to fit in a second meeting on the 27th. So I encourage everybody to come. There's a public session at the beginning of the meetings and a public session at the end, and like I said, we're getting into the substance of it. The report is available and the past meetings are available, so come check it out and everybody participate. It's going to be a, I'm anticipating, hopefully, that we're going to get through some of these questions. In the next two to three months and hopefully have this issue narrowed down and hopefully get a report up to the state board if it's bound to be feasible. I'm hoping before the end of the year, at the latest, so.
Thank you, Joe.
Sure.
Are there any other subcommittee reports? Anyone want to report on anything?
The only thing I'll say, Josh, and I don't know if you want to talk about the reopening committee with the Board of Ed.
Oh, yeah.
They graciously invited myself, Josh, and Alderwoman Strowman to be a part of that. Each of us are on a specific subcommittee. Working with the superintendent and, you know, working towards the state is mandated that there be three different plans. A distance learning plan, a hybrid plan, as well as an in-person plan for the reopening of the school district for the beginning of the year. Those plans have to be submitted in the next couple of weeks. And before any final decision is made, so that's kind of the update with that.
Hey, Josh, this is not a committee report, but I do want to make a statement. And, and that's, I wanted to thank Chief Andy Cota. He has, and myself, have been involved with the Martin Luther King Bus Committee, which is made mainly of the pastors of the. Of the Ansonia community, and we brought along some young people and a couple other community members to talk about the diversity issue. Within the valley and the relationship between the community and the police department. And Andy has been very valuable being on that committee. He hasn't reported it, but he has been very valuable in being there. So, you know, we're looking at how we can better connect the community along with the police department, connect the young people, answer questions people may have. How do we have those tough discussions that we need to have? So we've been meeting, I think it's now every other week. So I just wanted to make people aware, because you may be seeing some information coming down the pipe, but I want to say special thank you to Chief Cota for being at the table.
Thank you, Diane, and thank you, chief. Thank you.
Hey, Diane, are you able to share some of those invites for, you know, people just to listen in? That's, that's something that interests me, and I'd like to potentially listen if I could.
Certainly. I'll send it to all the Aldermen. I'll ask them, David Morgan, put everybody on the list. This is a Zoom meeting, naturally.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Any, any other reports or anything else in here?
Josh, I can't find it in the 77 attachments that went out, but I know they did send out the current collection rate for the taxes, and I know it was, it was rather positive, so. I don't know the exact number, but I'll have to look at it and send it back out to the Alderman, but it was a pretty positive number from what I gathered.
It was high 90s.
Yeah, it was definitely over 97. I think we were budgeted at 97, and it was definitely over that. I just don't recall where it was, and I can't find it, of course, right now.
Yeah, I looked at it yesterday. All right, good. All right, so.
Hey, Josh, can I make a quick update? I just looked into the absentee situation.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm back. The, the application that came to everybody's mail, that one would have to be in six days before the election, so the election's on the 11th, so I think that's the fifth that it would have to be in by. But there is an emergency application that's available within that six-day timeframe, and the reason for that is just so that the town clerks can get out the ballots, mail them out. And then provide enough of a window of time for the voter to send them back, so I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you.
No problem.
Thanks for busting back in. Appreciate it.
You got it. Nice haircut.
All right, so move on to municipal reports. We'll start with the vote recommendations. So at this point, I think we'll call Kim back. She said she wanted to speak with us. So they're going to unmute her. Kim, you're still here, right?
Yep, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. Good evening, everyone, again. As you can tell from our municipal report, we did go to the vote meeting last week, and we requested some transfers. And the amount of about 177,000 to take care of some of the accounts that were short this year. What we did is we went ahead, we made that entry, and we're able to run another report and check on the rest of the accounts to see where we stood after that. Along the way, since that meeting, we also came upon some invoices and some extra expenses that we weren't aware of at that time of the meeting. If you look at what I had sent everyone just before the meeting, around 5:00 probably tonight. We had some additional pandemic expenses, including the fee for the consultant that we used to file on our behalf for FEMA. Legal, the June invoices also came in, and there was no money left in the line to do an encumbrance, so we need to. Get the $39,000 that we've got there for the June invoices paid as well in the right fiscal year. There was a legal ad that was placed by the land use that had not had a PO pulled for it before, but the invoice has now come in, so we're aware of that one. Our Verizon bill for interdepartmental communications arrived that covered May through June. That should also be put in the correct fiscal year, which would be 1920. Our cloud backup invoice for our Barracuda, that came in as well. That also needs to be paid. It was a June invoice, and then we've also got ongoing. Computer service going on that's continuing to finish up the final parts of our phone system that were put in, as well as the cameras that were put down at Public Works and in the library. The extent of the number of cameras and things that we needed for those locations needed some extra specialized type of wiring and things like that, so there's about $10,000. More of fees that have been incurred for that project as well, but it is almost complete. That one has been one, too, that's been worked on for years. So we're almost there, and the biggest piece here was the June invoices arrived for the recycling in the hallway for Public Works. Those came to about $133,000. So between all of these additional invoices that need to be put in the 1920 fiscal year, we're requesting approval if we can use the fund balance, put that into vote contingency. And make all of these accounts right. I also did send you an updated report. We went ahead and pulled the POs just so that we could, you could see exactly which lines were short and where it was that we needed these. Invoices posted and put into the system. This has been a very unusual year, to say the least. I mean, every year we do have these things that kind of come in, but it's usually the first week of July that we'll kind of really know where we are. But this year, between people being out of the office, the departments weren't up and running full at their locations by the time we would actually get invoices. It just was a very unusual year. I really can't say much more than that, as well as the pandemic expenses that we incurred as well, just because of what we're going through and what we needed to. To take care of in order to keep the employees and the public and everyone safe. I'm here if you have any questions. I hope you'll consider our request. For the additional, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Hey, Kim, it's Tony. Is this an additional 200 on top of what vote approved last week?
It is. It is an additional amount. These are all new expenses that are rightfully 1920 expenses with June invoice dates.
No, I understand the period, so.
Yep.
I believe when they approved it last week, it was also to cover the shorts that were there. I believe we had also said that there was a number of accounts that had some overages that would not fall out. Because of the amount of effort, I guess it would take to move them until the audit occurred.
Right, that's, right, that's why we wanted to do it this way, with to use the fund balance at this point, and then at the end of the year, when the audit is all done, those items will fall to the bottom.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not a fan of doing it like that, but do you know what that credit number is that potentially would fall back in?
That I can't tell at this point.
Why? If we know what the shorts are, why don't we know what the overs are?
Well, we, I can't even tell from the report right now. We've got two more entries to make for the Board of Ed side. Their expenditure amount for the 702 line is also within here, so I can't even tell from that. What's left. Until we do their accrued wages, which we talked, we tried to get in touch with them again today. We need to make that entry for that, as well as their open POs to close that out, so at this point, I can't. I can't give you a definitive amount. It's a moving target.
No, I get that. I get that. I think from the salary perspective, you know, salary is what it is. I think some of that other, some of those other discretionary spendings, some of those other expenses, equipment. Whatever, fill in the blank, supplies kind of thing. I assume if that stuff is. I don't want to say over, but if it's, if it's been unexpensed, if it's still there. There's a thought that that's not going to move, and I'm just curious why we don't have our finger on that number.
Well, the other, the other side of this right now, what we're looking at is just the expenditure portion. What we aren't also looking at is the revenue side. The revenue side also needs to be looked at. And to make sure that we've received all of the revenue that we have, we'll need to do some accruals. For instance, there's arms expenses. Revenue that are out there that will need to be accrued for. All of those entries on the revenue side also need to be made, so until I can. Get to the point where the expenditures have become where that is what they are, period, and the revenue is, has everything in it, then we can tell what the net value would be the effect. But we're not close to that point yet.
No, I get that. I think just almost a $400,000 ask is a, is a big ask, and, and I know some of that's going to fall back to the bottom line, and, you know, at least for my sake, I'd like to know what some of that is. Because, because again, you know, moving almost stuff, you know, close to 400,000 out, that's, that's, that's a, and again, I know the COVID thing has happened or is still happening, and we have the expenses related to it, but. I still like some sort of sense on what's going to fall back into that.
Yeah, I mean.
Is it 30,000? Is it 300,000?
You know, I could, if I had the revenue side, perhaps I could tell you at that point, but the problem is we need to go through the audit because the auditor will look at any invoices that we pay in July. Anything with a June date, he's going to pull back in, so that will affect the net effect of the difference between the expenditures and the revenue. So really, until we're even done with the audit, we don't have a definitive number. We have a good feel for it as we move through the audit, but it won't be finalized until the end.
Oh, I get that. Again, I'm looking for that flyby. Is it 30,000? Is it 300,000? So, all right.
Yeah, I.
That's all I have.
Can I say one more thing?
Sure.
Okay, just also, what will happen is if we let these go and we end up paying them into the new fiscal year, just so that you're aware, at the end, this is definitely your yes or your no to the approval here, but let me explain. That when the auditor takes a look at these invoices and they find, for instance, that we've got this $130,000 worth of trash bills that have now been paid out of the new fiscal year 2021. He'll pull them back into the correct year because the expenditures need to match, right?
Yeah, you can't do that. I get that, and I 100% get that. I'm not saying roll this into the new fiscal year. You have to book it in the, in the period incurred. I completely agree with that. But just, just to the point, you know, that when it was made at the vote meeting, that there were some other lines that, you know, we're going to use to offset what we're pulling out of the fund balance. I would just like some sort of ballpark of what that is.
I can't give you a definitive number, but if you look at the report like I'm looking at it here, and each of the lines, for instance, there's a couple of wage lines where the whole wage was not used. Life insurance, which I think it's the like dental, dental plan. There's still 29,000 left in there, for instance, so. There are pieces of that that will, that will fall, but I can't give you a definitive number, unfortunately. It would just be such a guess.
I get it, and it's a moving target, as you said, but just to have some sort of sense to say, as of July 14th, this is kind of where the number was, you know, we're expecting, hey, we're, we're asking for 400, but there's a potential 300 coming back. Or there's nothing coming back, you know, that's, that's kind of something.
Well, hopefully, yeah, hopefully, the piece that we will be getting back will be the FEMA reimbursement. That should be a piece, a sizable piece here that should be coming in, I would think, you know, probably by the end of the year here. That should offset a lot of these pandemic, because if I remember right, I think it was about 77,000 last with the first request for the transfers. with the first request for the transfers, and now we have another 7,000. So between FEMA and then OPM, if we can get most of that reimbursed, that will be a big help.
Okay.
Yeah, you're going to see a lot of that money come back, Tony.
And that will go directly back into the fund balance, correct?
Yes.
I'll ask you too, Sheila, define a lot. Is it 30,000? Is it 300,000?
Well, the goal is to try to make us 100% whole. So what FEMA doesn't fund, OPM will pick up.
So Sheila, are you saying that OPM will pick up the total dollar amount that we've spent?
Yeah, less what FEMA gives us. That's the intention, anyway. That's what they're telling us. So they're telling us, apply to FEMA, get approval for anything that you can, as much as you can, and what doesn't get approved, OPM will pick up the slack. A lot of pressure on OPM.
So to clarify, this as Tony would say, a big nut it's a temporary moving to close out the year, and a lot of this will come back via those multiple forms.
Yes. Yes, I mean, we should I mean, conservatively, we should get back about 150 to 200,000 in the expense lines, conservatively, looking at it.
That is conservative, yeah.
And that will, of course, once we have got it, at some point, we have to say, this is the last we will do. So this, we've got to say that the year will close out now, so that we can move ahead and get ready to start doing the audit and everything else that needs to be done to move into the new fiscal year. We did not expect all of these are extra expenses, otherwise I would have brought it last week, of course, and done it as one large request.
Oh, it's a moving target. I get that completely. I get that. I'm not giving you a hard time either, Kim. I'm just just trying to understand the numbers and what's going to happen at the bottom line.
Now, ask the way. We all need to understand this.
Yep.
You should see how Tony treats us.
But Tony, that's what I was talking about when I was talking about the budgeting, even when we were talking about putting the budget together. Having a 206,000 to come out of the fund, or 300,000, that shouldn't be a huge surprise at the end of the year. We should be knowing that.
Diane, the process I'm sorry, the process changed. So last year, what we did was, we took all of the shorts and all of the overs, and whatever was left, that was what was used to offset the fund, and then everything cleared out through the audit. The process changed where we said, hey, we're only going to take the shorts this year because the process is so cumbersome. They left all of the lines that were over or under, you know, they didn't expense them. They left all of those still to just flush out through the audit, which makes the number hitting the fund balance look, in my mind, extremely bad. You know, you're showing a $400,000 short, you know, obviously, there's money there to offset it, and there's some reimbursement that's coming, but just the optic around pulling all of your shorts and hitting the fund for that, you know, is different than we've done in years past. And, you know, for comparison, it's just different.
I have a question, if I may.
No.
Kim, on the additional transfer request, you know, the $200,000 item there, I guess it's Public Works Department and Recycling and Hallway is 132,000. Is Mickey around, or do you know how that's justified?
Well, Mike was here before. I don't know if he is still here. I mean, there's a contract in place. Yes, maybe Sheila, you could help.
Remember, I asked if anybody had any more questions for Mike the last year? Yeah. Anyway, it's 132,000. I think that, too, is going to be leveled out, but actually, Mike is probably best to answer that. I think it's going to be leveled out based on the tonnage. So we're going to have, we're seeing less hallways, less pickups and hallways than we have in the past, so hopefully, it will, you know, level off. We'll see a decrease.
Kim, did you say that was two statement cycles or two months' worth of expenses that were there for the hallway and for recycle?
No, those are June invoices.
Oh, June. I thought you said May and June. Okay, all right, just June.
May and June was the one for the Verizon bill that covered May and June.
Oh, gotcha, gotcha. I misunderstood. I apologize.
No problem.
So if we have the expense, why don't we also have the revenue? So am I hearing you right, Sheila? Am I hearing you saying that it may level off because we're going to have more revenue coming in on that line, on the recycle line? So if we have expense, why would we not have the revenue at this point?
We're going to, no, that no, maybe I'm not explaining it properly. That's why I said Mike would probably be better, but I think what you're going to see is less less of an expense
Future expenditures. Future expenditures.
Lower your expenditures.
For next year or for
Oh, that's what part of the stuff that we did last month, Diane. When we changed some of the the fees over at the transfer station down there. So that should offset some of the expenses, is what I think I'm understanding.
And we're also looking at the transfer station and maybe trying to get the most popular days and maybe eliminating one of those days to have less tonnage and less hallways. So those are some of the things we're looking at for improvements.
But for clarity, that has no impact on the June invoice that Kim threw out there already.
No, that's just the budget over.
That's my question.
Yep. So Diane, it is what it is. So that figure is the invoice. There is no additional revenue to come to offset against that.
Okay, thank you.
At least on the trash line and the recycle line.
Right, thank you.
Other questions on this?
So this is Tarek. So I'm assuming that's, you know, when we say we're expecting conservatively 200 to 250,000 in overages coming in, that 100,000 difference is part of that is FEMA and part of that is, you know, sort of non-FEMA expenditures. So that trash item is going to be a big component of those non-FEMA expenditures that we're not going to be able to recoup.
Not from FEMA?
Not from anywhere.
There's a budget line for the trash that's there, so if the trash line isn't over, obviously, it would expense against that trash line. Recycle.
You guys stop dumping your tires in Jeanette's yard, because that's what I've been doing. That's saving a lot of money.
Just put them in the right-hand corner.
Well, filled up, Joe. There's no room.
Yeah. There are people asking for tires online a couple of weeks ago to work out with. And I was like, go look in Joe's yard. He probably got them all. All right, so what are we going to do with this? Do we Kim, you're asking for two motions according to
Yeah, yes, we would need two motions. One, to allow us to use the fund balance as income and put it into boat contingency, and then a second one to allow us to take the money that we just put into boat contingency in this 206,450 amount and allocate it to the proper lines that are included in my spreadsheet.
Kim, can you call off the total dollar amount again? Sorry, 200? I'll make the first motion to move it from fund balance as income into the boat contingency in the amount of 206,450.
Want some Alderman Ramon? Second by Alderman Cassetti.
Just one more pointed discussion, Tarek.
Discussion. I have a question. Why wasn't this brought up at the boat meeting last week? Because it's boat's prerogative to approve these funds before it goes to the Board of Aldermen, not after. The Board of Aldermen cannot actually take the money from the fund balance without boat first voting on it. And here we are, we're voting on something that should have been taken care of last week. Either that or it should be taken care of at the next meeting. The boat members should vote on this.
They can always do it pending boat approval. So
Well, we could vote first, but it doesn't go, it's not legal according to our charter until boat votes on it.
I don't know about that. I think you can do a pending boat approval, but, you know, hopefully, we'll get
Well, the authority for the money lies with boat, not the board. The Board of Aldermen can approve, deny, or change by a two-thirds majority, but the vote itself goes by boat. So we're bypassing boat and just jumping ahead when this was never proposed to them a week ago at that meeting.
Well, these came up after that.
Yeah, I don't think she had the invoices then, Dan, processed.
Well, then we should have had a special meeting, or it goes to the next boat meeting. Right now, we're just, you know, leapfrogging and jumping over a committee that has the financial responsibility for the city. And there is no accommodation for the Board of Aldermen to appropriate money from the fund balance without boat approval. You can either deny, change, or vote and approve. You can't just make it up yourself.
And this board has the financial say. This board is
No, they have the approval to approve, deny, or change by two-thirds majority. They do not have the right to take the money from the fund balance by itself. It's just an oversight. It is not the final word. If there was no vote for boat to approve these funds, why are we waiting to this point, to this meeting? Why wasn't boat contacted, and they could have called an emergency meeting to adjust this? That's all my point is.
No, Dan, that's a fair point, Dan, and I'll modify my motion. Tarek, I know you have a question, too, so let me let me modify the motion, and then you can speak your piece. Dollar amount being the same, the 206,450 that we had previously called out, I'm just going to add one contingent on there per Alderman King, that the Board of Apportionment and Taxation has to you know, have some sort of emergency meeting and vote on this, the same money movement, the 206,450, within a week's time.
Within a week's time, okay.
Agreed.
And then still a second by Cassetti. All right, Tarek, you have a comment?
Yeah, Tony, you mentioned that this was a change of process this year, but that you didn't like doing it this way. Is that an expectation that we'll be doing it, we'll be going back to the way it was done in previous years going forward? You mentioned that there was kind of like a cumbersome process in sort of calculating the revenue or the overages side and netting this out. What was the logic and how are we feeling about it?
I think it was just based on the amount of effort that it took to run through all of those overage lines in order to sweep them. I know there was a lot of smaller lines and things like that. And the effort, I'm not going to disagree with Kim, the effort's rather large. And it does ultimately get repeated, and it does fall through with the audit process. So ultimately, it does come there. Why was it changed? I don't know, other than just, you know, the amount of effort that takes it. I like consistency in the process, especially if you're going to change it. I want to know what the impact is, especially, you know, if you're saying, hey, we're short. Okay, well, if we did it the old way, what does it look like? What is the overage? You know, that's the piece that, you know, I'm kind of after and kind of gave Kim a little bit of a hard time about, because, you know, last year, when it fell out, it was X dollars. This year, it looks exponentially worse. You know, it's close to over, you know, close to $400,000. It looks like we're short. And, you know, without knowing the facts behind that, it looks pretty bad. When in actuality, there's reimbursements coming, there's other lines that, you know, we didn't expend fully that are going to offset against that.
So you can approve pending boat approval.
And you're going to keep that, your motion is the 206,450
So you don't have to come back to this board?
Pending their approval within the next week. Vote.
Yes.
Perfect. And we have a second by Alderman Cassetti. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close.
No.
One no. Alderman Phipps, any extensions? Okay, motion passes. And then Kim was requesting a second motion to finish this process, then, to transfer those funds in the same amount from that boat contingency into the appropriate accounts.
Gosh, I'll make that motion to move said transfer in the amount of 206,450 from boat contingency into the accounts as listed in detail, defined as Attachment 1 for the municipal report, contingent on a boat approval within the next seven days.
The second.
I'll second.
Alderman King. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Close. Extensions.
I abstain.
One extension, Alderman Phipps. All right. If that completes that, we can let Kim off the hook for now.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Kim.
Appreciate it.
I do have a question. I'm sorry.
Yes, for me or for Kim?
Josh.
Yeah.
Well, to whoever. So suppose the vote went a different way. Suppose the vote was, no, we're not going to do it. What happens? Suppose we said no, that we didn't approve that extra money coming out of the fund balance. What happens then?
I guess the first question would be, why would you say no?
Forget that. I'm asking a question of what would happen?
So if they said no, Diane, they would expense them out of the current fiscal year, the current budget technically that we just approved, and then when it goes through the audit, finance would get written up for having expenses incurred in the wrong period, and those would then get readjusted back to the prior year.
Okay, thanks.
Well, actually, my understanding, because I was on Charter Revision when we wrote this, the Aldermen, with a two-thirds vote, can overrule or change the boat vote. So if they voted and denied this, it would take a two-thirds vote for the Board of Aldermen to approve it and continue.
If Alderwoman Strowman's question was, what happens if boat denied it, then Alderman King is exactly right. The Aldermen could basically step in. But as Alderman Mammon points out, if the Board of Aldermen essentially vetoes it, then essentially, it's how it's accounted for will be changed to the city's detriment in this case.
All right. Well, thank you, guys. That's difficult, but I appreciate the explanations, both from Kim and actually the Tony and Dan and all right, so moving on, we have a flurry of land use reports from March, April, May, and June all came in for this month. Is there any objection to doing them together? If anyone wants to do them separately, we can, but do you want to approve them all together? Is there an objection to doing the four as one? Just accepting these reports? All right, that's what we're doing, then.
I'll make a motion to accept the land use reports for March, April, May, and June collectively.
Motion by Alderman Mammon, second by Alderman Yamman. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Close. Stained. All right, thank you. Let's see, what do we got next? Tax collector report and the request for refunds. These were accompanied by a letter from the mayor regarding the 7S. Anyone?
Make that motion as well.
There are also a lot.
Oh, I'm alive.
Well, there's three different reports. Do you want to do them individually?
Yeah, we should probably do those individually. The refund report for, let's see, what order they're in here.
A minute. March is $9,355.08.
Okay, so a motion for March 2020 in the amount of 9,355.08.
Motion.
Motion by Alderman Ramon, second by
I'll second.
Second by Yamman. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Stained. All right, motion passes unanimously. The next one is the April 2020 in the amount of
Make a motion.
Motion by Alderman Rivers.
Second.
Second by Alderman Yamman. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Stained. All right, motion passes again. Thank you. And the last one, the May, and that's in the amount of 1,000 All right, motion passes again. Thank you. And the last one for the May, and that's in the amount of $1,518.64.
Motion.
Motion by Alderman Yamman, second by Alderman Cassetti, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? All right, motion passes again. Thank you. Uh, we have no accidents and claims. We have three communications. The first one is, uh, the Bruce Fair, um, 224, uh, 22 and 24 Willow Street, and that will be taken up in executive session, correct?
Right.
Yes, so we'll, uh, we'll skip through that. Uh, and then we have two communications from Chief Cota, that are in your package. Communication two is requesting approval for the purchase of a 2020 Ford utility police interceptor vehicle. And communication three is requesting approval for the purchase of a, uh, 2020 Dodge Durango. Those are both, um, within their, um, budget. And they came in, I think, if I remember, it was about 3,000 under, um, the approved amount by using their, their approved vendors.
I'll make a motion to, uh, accept communication number two and approve the police purchase of the 2020 Ford utility police interceptor vehicle for $52,231.75.
Motion by Alderman Yamman, second by Alderman Rivers. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Extentions? All right, motion, uh, passes unanimously. And then, uh, communication three?
I'll make a motion to accept communication three and also to approve the purchase of a 2020 Dodge Durango SXT vehicle for $35,642.20.
Second by Alderman Rivers. All in favor?
Discussion, please.
Uh, sure.
This is Alderman King. I, I just have a question. I understand that this is a twofold problem, because it's in the police chief's contract that he gets a new vehicle every so many years. But under the last referendum, we bought four, four brand-new Dodge Durangos that are at the police department. In this time of need and with our current budget crisis, can we not outfit, considering those already have radios and they're already in use? Can the chief not use one of those vehicles? He can pick whichever of four that he likes rather than buying another one on top of it, because this isn't a patrol vehicle. It's not a utility vehicle. It's nothing that's going to be used. And I understand the chief does need the vehicle and he deserves it. But we have vehicles in fleet. And to add another vehicle rather than a patrol vehicle, I don't see all that benefits us.
Any other discussion? All right, well, we had a motion, second. I think I know where to go on this, but, uh, oh, Rich, did you want to speak?
Uh, my understanding, if Dan's talking about the Durango, I believe that was for the Detective Division. One of them is really, really old. And they were replacing the oldest Detective Division one. So there was a, an interceptor and a Durango, I think, was for the detectives. That was my understanding.
We bought, not two years ago, four brand-new Durangos. And the only time I see them on any, on any scene is when somebody drives to a meeting or goes somewhere else. Otherwise, they're sitting at the police department. There's nothing wrong with them, or the Ford Expedition that the chief currently drives. They're, they are not old vehicles.
No, the, the detectives each have a vehicle. And I think one is really old and one of them was damaged. That's the replacement. That's what that Durango is for, is for the Detective Bureau. It's not a replacement for the chief, I don't believe.
No, I understand. They, they had four of them and they already had five vehicles before that. And we sold off a couple of the old ones. At one point, the police department, we have 25 patrol officers and we had 23 vehicles stood at the park. So while we're looking or scratching and wondering how we're going to pay for things, we ticked this out of a contingency of money that was saved over many years. And my understanding was that was going to be for two patrol vehicles. And I believe everybody on the Finance Committee and Boat understood that would be for patrol vehicles. And now we're looking at buying basically a civilian version of a vehicle while we have things available on our own fleet.
And, and again, I questioned that myself. The, the answer I received was that they requested $100,000 for the two police interceptors. And we knocked it down to 90, and.
Yes, because the fire marshal needed a vehicle after, he's got a 15-year-old vehicle and he needed a vehicle. And we have very new vehicles with very low mileage on them that had never really been put in use. I would compare.
I, I'm just trying to.
No, I understand. I understand.
The, the questions were asked and these are the answers, uh, that I received in, in asking about those, so.
I know, understood, understood. Those are the answers I got too. That's why I'm raising my questions. I mean, I, I'm all for part of the contract and the chief gets a vehicle. But at this time, last year, he was, um, the police department was coming to the Finance Committee and Boat deploying us to provide them with two vehicles, service vehicles, yet this year they'll forego a service vehicle to buy a civilian vehicle for the chief.
Again, I don't believe they're buying a vehicle for the chief. That's what I'm not, I'm trying to explain.
The 2020 Durango is not going to go towards that. I mean, did we crash or destroy one of the brand-new Ford Durangos that were purchased not more than two years ago?
Mr. President?
Yes, Alderman Spigorolo, go ahead.
Um, instead of sitting around speculating what the vehicle is going to be used for or what needs replacing, et cetera, why don't we table the issue and give Chief Cota an opportunity to, um, review his vehicles and what's required or needed presented to us?
I agree with that. I would, I, 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 I believe in Chief Cota's ability and I would like to hear his explanation on this because we do have other vehicles there. And, and just questioning the type of vehicle that was being purchased. It's, it is not a patrol vehicle. And initially, in the budget was for replacement of two patrol vehicles.
If he comes back and makes a solid case for why they need these vehicles or replacements or.
I will, I will be the first one to back him.
Then, yeah, exactly. We'll just give us an evaluation of our fleet. I don't think it's unreasonable.
Exactly.
The two letters. Budgeted $90,000 for two vehicles and that's what he's doing? As I understand it.
It's already allocated.
So it's already allocated. It's in, it's within his budget. And now we're telling him not to purchase the two vehicles because we want to know what your other vehicles?
We already voted.
Well, perhaps, uh, the vehicles should have been explained, because my understanding was that that was for the replacement of two patrol vehicles. And if there's not a patrol vehicle, then it needs to be represented through proper channels.
But didn't they, but didn't last year, Dan, they found, they, they found a way to be able to purchase a vehicle last year? And then they're.
Because, because two of them were smashed in accidents, one by a patrol officer rear-ending somebody and somebody else hit a vehicle from behind while it was parked. And we were able to purchase two new vehicles based on the 50% that the insurance paid us on the old vehicles.
Right. So they, they were able to fill that need through another means and he still needs, there's still a need, as I understand, there's still a need for, for this as Rich explained it, for the Detective Bureau.
Yeah, well, well, it's just my understanding that it was presented in the budget as, uh, purchase for, uh, need for two patrol vehicles. That was, that was my only question. And, and I don't disagree. They need things and they need proper equipment, but it was supposed to be for, I believe, two patrol vehicles under that line. And now we're hearing it's something completely different.
Well, that's not, but, but the letter itself says it's for the detective vehicle. They're replacing a 2010 Chevy with multiple mechanical issues and it's no longer in warranty.
Yes, communication three.
That's why I'm, that, that, that's the only reason I'm, I'm saying is that it seems like the request is on point.
But I still think, personally, I still think, uh, the amount of vehicles in the police department's fleet is excessive. I mean, how many vehicles do we, do we need? That each detective, did he all work at the same time and all need their own vehicles to drive to a scene?
I don't know.
I'm not being critical. I mean, they do a great job. I'm just saying, from a cost perspective, that's ridiculous. To have vehicles sitting 90% of the time until you need one. Meanwhile, we're, we're going to forego replacing a patrol vehicle to replace something that is not an emergency response vehicle. I'd rather my patrol vehicles and the police patrol in the streets have new vehicles because if the detective's car doesn't start on the first try, it's not a big issue. He can always get in his own car and drive to the scene. If a 911 call comes in and patrol officer's car doesn't start, you have a problem. So we're not replacing patrol vehicles in this. That's what, that was my understanding from the beginning.
Well, I, again, and I, and I hate to keep pushing this, but is that, no, I, I, I think differently because as you've indicated, there was an accident and there was also a car that was rear-ended, rear-ended, so they did replace a vehicle last year. We just authorized them to replace a second vehicle.
Yes. Uh, we replaced, we replaced two vehicles for the half-life with two vehicles with a full life and it only costs us one because we only paid half on each.
Right.
So that was a, that was a good thing, but in this, I just believe that we were updating our fleet because the last couple of years in our budget, we weren't able to guarantee two new vehicles as we always tried to do.
Mr. President?
I'll be still tonight. Can we move on and do it, Tony? Recommend it?
We have a motion and a second, so unless they're going to repeal that.
Oh, we voted on it.
No, we didn't vote yet. We were about to vote.
And there was discussion, so, yeah.
Well, the discussion came after the vote.
I think that was the first, the first, we voted on one, but not, not the, the second one.
Was there a vote on the second one?
Either second one is no vote.
I don't think there was.
There was no vote. There was a motion and.
There wasn't. We were about to vote and Dan jumped in and said he wanted to discuss.
Alderman, Alderman Yamman will. Then approve.
We have a motion and a second, unless.
No, I didn't get a second. I only have a motion.
Second.
Second by Alderman Cassetti.
Mr. President. Mr. President, point of privilege, I cannot hear anything that's going on. There's so much overtalking. I have no idea what we're voting on. Do we?
This is.
Silence so that we can, uh, at least find out what we're voting on?
This is communication number three. Is there, is there background noise for you, Bill?
No, it seems like there's a couple of people. It becomes gibberish.
Okay.
I don't know what the motion is.
The motion, we, so there were two, two communications from the chief, communication two and three. Two was for a interceptor and we approved that. Three is for the Durango. And we had a motion and a second and all this discussion and we're, here we are.
As, as proposed, the two requests.
Right, and they come in, they were approved in their budget for 2021 for $90,000.
Understood.
The total of these comes to 86,000 or 87,000, so they're under the amount that's in their budgeted line for the two vehicles.
Okay, so there's a, there's a, there's a motion and a second on the table?
Correct.
Okay, I'm ready to vote.
All right.
But my only other point in here is this, is that, is that, not to be unreasonable about this, because I'm willing to entertain discussion, but because it's on the Connecticut State Contract List, I don't know if that price remains if we pump it another month. And that's the only question in my mind. And without the chief here to be able to address that, I don't know if the price goes up.
Good point.
Joe, you're the one that made the motion, so.
I mean, I think we should take a vote on this.
Good. Vote. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Oppose? Extentions?
No, that's King.
No, okay, one no, Alderman King, no extensions. Uh, so that passes. Thank you, guys. All right, so moving on, we have one resolution. The, um, Sustainable Connecticut Resolution. Sheila, do you want to, uh, speak to this?
Resolution.
This is another one of those boilerplate, uh, you're, you're muted.
That's an awful thing when I'm muted. Listen, this is a, um, this is basically a certification process for, um, Ansonia to become a sustainable, uh, CT community. And I guess, you know, the best way to describe it is it's like, kind of like, uh, Ernie Boy Scout or Girl Scout badges. So you tick off these things on a dashboard that qualify you to be a sustainable community, things like improving walkability, brownfields remediation, um, renewable energy project, arts and culture, farmers market, community gardens. A lot of the things we're already doing, supporting our local businesses, so, you know, I'm, I'm a very competitive person and, uh, and, and also they give you points for regional projects as well, but and, and I, and we want to, we want to do some of that, um, and we are doing some of that. So, um, being competitive, I want to crush the competition, which are the other 160 towns and cities that are competing. So, um, you know, I'm going to look to this board for any volunteers to help us tick off some of these projects. And then, uh, once you're a sustainable community, you do get a chance to, um, compete for grant funds to do a larger project of our choosing. We also have to, uh, we will also want to include this on our plan of conservation and development, so I'll tap into, uh, Dave Elder for some help, but, um, you know, this is just a resolution from this board allowing me, uh, and allowing Ansonia to compete and participate in this. And I, you know, it's, it's another healthy thing for our community to be a part of. So I hope you'll consider that.
Well, is there any cost associated with this, Sheila?
No, Joe, um, there isn't. And in fact, there's technical assistance and, um, we may have to raise some matching funds, but they even help you do that, so. Um, not, it's not municipal funds, but they, they help you with donations and so forth.
Okay, so there's, there's no mandates that we have to adhere to that are imposed if we elect to do this or anything like that?
Oh, that's a great question, but no, there aren't. There are not.
Okay.
Any other questions on this?
I had some observations, uh, sir. I, I took the liberty of looking them up on the website and they have a substantial, um, website that explains their different, uh, approaches to sustainability and, um, the first impact that I got was, Fred, it doesn't cost us anything and it gives us an attaboy award and down the road, maybe we'll get a cookie or something. But quite honestly, uh, at this time, I don't believe we've got the resources or the time to devote to something like this. We've got a lot going on in this town right now upfront, and we've got to get it done, or we don't have anything left to sustain.
That's a fair, that's a fair point, Alderman Phipps. But I think, uh, I will point out to you that we want to be a healthy community and we're doing a lot of the things already. So I think we're, you know, we're almost halfway there on our own. We, you know, we have our river walks, we support them, we support our local businesses. We're doing, uh, energy renewable projects. We're, you know, we're, we're doing a lot of the things that are required already. So I think, uh, with little, with not much effort, um, we can, we can get there, but, you know, good point.
Yeah, well, that's what I thought too. As you say, hell, we might be ahead of the game, but.
We may, we may be a silver already. Yeah.
We're going to be looking for volunteers and, and, you know, it's just going to be another distraction that right now, in, at least in my viewpoint, we don't have time for. We've got too many huge issues in front of us. Some of them we probably don't even see. But anyway, my point.
Doesn't the board already have a Sustainability Committee?
We do have a Sustainability Committee. Uh, Alderman Spigorolo is the chair of that.
Right, so. I don't know if that would coincide with this. All right, yeah, that's a good point, Diane. I'm going to work closely with Alderman Spigorolo on this project if you approve it.
This project, Sheila, it positions us relative to other communities and may set us up, um, in a more competitive respect, correct?
Well, yes, and it attracts, it attracts attention, it attracts developers. I mean, it's, it's just another, um, badge of honor.
Yeah, I mean, the mayor and this board have been working very hard to make Ansonia not only, um, a stronger city, but, but really a dynamic city, um, sort of positioned to, to help our region, right? To help our region push forward, to get attention. And so, you know, I, I think there's never been. And so, you know, I think there's never been a shortage of time or to do what's best, advance our cause. Residents certainly deserve it.
All right, so we have a motion to approve this resolution. Motion by Alderman Yaman, second by Alderman Cassetti. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
No.
One one opposed, Alderman Phipps. Any abstentions? Okay, thank you. Resolution two was deleted at the beginning of the meeting, so we may come back to that. But I just remembered that in my haste to get Kim out of here, we didn't actually vote on the the boat, the regular boat recommendations. We did. We did the two motions that she wanted, but the monthly municipal report. What recommendations and requests for refunds? Anyone?
So moved.
Alderman Cassetti.
Second.
Second by Alderman Rivers. Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstaining. My motion passes unanimously. Thanks. Sorry about that. Let's see. All right, next item we have, we have one resignation. It was mentioned in the in the one of the opening talks from Michelle Bradshaw from the finance office. I won't read the whole thing, but I regret to inform you, I've accepted a position with another company. As Kim mentioned, she's going to be around for a little bit, helping them out. And then they're they're working on a succession plan.
Would you like to make a motion? Please, we send Michelle a letter of thank you for her years of service.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Yaman, second by Alderman Rivers. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? All right, no abstentions.
Hey, Josh, if I may, I just wanted to just touch upon what Corporation Council Marini said earlier on the importance of potentially transforming that position from, I believe it's a staff account or a payroll account into, you know, leveraging that into the full-time comptroller that I think we've been chasing for, you know, a few years now. Some of the initiatives John mentioned, of course, you know, the new software rolling out, the merger between WPCA and Tax. There's, you know, something within the initiative for the Census Office that we're doing with the permits. There's obviously projects with ATP, SHW, ABC, XYZ, one, two, three, you pick it. There's so much going on that the finance behind that is pretty critical to whether some of these projects make it or we completely cripple the taxpayers with taxes here for some something that we overlook by not having the right oversight on it. So I just want to stress the importance of, you know, that initiative to transform that position into that full-time comptroller.
You know, I could, if I could allow to piggyback on Tony's observation and it is very clearly stated in our charter that there will be a comptroller. No ifs, ands, or buts. Why we haven't had one is beyond me, but now we're, you know, playing pussyfoot with the merging and so forth. It's pretty clear. I don't even know why we're having this discussion. Same little Dan was saying before, it's very clear in our charter what we're supposed to do. We could save probably a lot of wind if we start reading the charter and going by it. My opinion. Thank you.
I agree.
We always have had an acting comptroller. So at times, Rich has been assigned as the acting comptroller, Kim as well. So there has never been a time where we haven't had a comptroller. The question is, what should the scope of that position encompass? Should it be full-time or part-time? And right now, we're looking at a position that could be capable of leadership of a department during these changing times.
Well, we've got a multimillion dollar corporation here and I think, as our charter says, we should have a comptroller. The last one we had was Billy Nimmens until he was fired. And, you know, you can't run a multimillion dollar corporation without one solid head at the top. And by pussyfooting around with temporaries and so forth is just leading us down a path that we probably don't want to go.
Question, what is Kim's title?
Acting comptroller, I believe.
She's the assistant comptroller and she's been acting comptroller as well, similar to Rich when he was assistant comptroller.
You know, like what a vice president does when the president can't do his job.
Okay, so, okay, all right, thank you.
Doesn't he become the president from the vice?
Not if he's on vacation.
Bad example, Joe.
President Stewart.
Yes. Who's this?
Josh.
Voice from beyond.
It's Dave. It's Dave.
Josh, can you hear me?
Yes.
That's Blackwell.
Blackwell. Go ahead.
Can you hear me or no?
Yes, go ahead. I couldn't. I didn't see you. Go ahead.
I would, I know the mayor's office had came out earlier in the meeting and had said that they were going to start a search for a new party to occupy that position. I would like to make a motion on behalf of the aldermen with the acceptance of the mayor and his team of putting Alderman Mamon in with Mayor Cassetti, Sheila O'Malley and John Marini in search of a new person to fill that position. I believe Alderman Mamon is very qualified, more qualified than probably at least any of the other aldermen to make a determination and I think that we should put him up there and assist the mayor's office in looking for a replacement.
Is he willing to do this?
Does it? Does it pay well?
I I accept that. Thanks, Dave.
So you have a motion by Alderman Blackwell and a second by Alderman Cassetti. Put Tony as our BOA rep on this search. Is that okay with the city? I hope.
Yeah, on behalf of the mayor's office, it's a great suggestion.
Okay.
Perfectly situated as finance committee chairman, so of course.
I'm glad Bill brought it up.
Yeah. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Bill.
All right, so do we vote on that?
No.
Okay, let's vote. Vote on this addition to the search committee. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions?
Mamon's abstaining.
Yeah, one abstention, Mamon. Thanks, Tony. Represent us well. All right, we have one appointment from the mayor through the Board of Apportionment and Taxation, three-year term. John Maloney, he actually introduced himself at the beginning of the meeting. Ansonia resident and I believe the address was seventy.
South Cliff.
South Cliff Street, sorry.
North Cliff, it is.
North.
Actually, this is a replacement for Tony Mamon.
Irreplaceable.
Yeah.
No.
So this is the term expiring twelve thirty, one twenty. So he's just finishing out that term.
So moved.
Motion by Cassetti, second by?
Yaman.
Yaman.
Point of discussion.
Yep, second. Alderman Roslin, go ahead.
John, thanks for being here, for introducing yourself and for putting your name forward to volunteer for the city. I just want to make note for the record that, you know, Phipps had put her name forward. There was conversation after the last election about sharing of commission appointments and board appointments and the Board of Apportionment and Taxation being such an important board and maintaining balance on there. A request was made very early on in that process and that selection and I want to note for the record that that request was ignored and that balance has not been addressed.
Thank you.
I've got a point, too, Mr. President. I see Mr. Maloney is still on board. I can see his forehead. But I noticed that on the mayor's I noticed on the mayor's letter of appointment, it had a post office box as his address.
Yes.
He just gave his address.
So, Bill, that that if you recall, he was the first person to speak in public session and all he did was give his address and then kick back and we were, I was like, why are you here? He said, I was giving you my address.
No, I appreciate that, but but the written document that we got from Mr. Mayor Cassetti said a post office box, sixty-nine, I think it was.
Correct, P.O. Box sixty-nine, and he clarified that it was seventy South Cliff Street, Ansonia.
Just clarifying it.
So we can we can amend that. That's correct, John, the address?
Yeah.
Yep. All right, thank you.
So just a final point, John, I'm going to vote against you here. It's nothing against you, okay? It's just against the process that was carried out here.
All right.
Understood. Any other comments? All right, so a motion to add John Maloney to the Board of Apportionment and Taxation to replacement for Mamon. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Oppose? Oppose? One opposition, one no. Roslin, any abstentions?
Mamon.
And one abstention, Mamon. All right, thanks. Welcome, John. Also, please do us proud in Ansonia. Hey, we have nothing under ordinance in new business. We have, it lists the Saint Sebastian facade loan application. Sheila, there's no there's no paperwork on this that we received.
Okay, well, that's a problem. Usually you will look over the loan application, but they the reason I'm bringing this to your attention is because the terms of the our facade loan are obviously any exterior work that's being done to a business. They can apply for this loan and pay back at a very low interest rate. And the program's been successful. I think I think John Marini started it when he was an alderman. And it's been, you know, it's been very helpful to businesses and especially in the downtown, but it's available to everyone. We're, you know, we're coming up against a couple of businesses, this Saint Sebastian Club being one of them, where they are really struggling and I don't want to, I don't want to say too much, but they have been struggling because of what's what's happened. And they're, they made a special request to apply for some of that loan money to just bridge the gap. And I guess, and I, you know, I'll defer to John, but I guess I'm looking to this board to see if there could be some exception made for a couple of the businesses that are really, you know, just want to make it through to the next step so that they can stay in business. And they do a lot of catering. They do, you know, parties where there's bars and so forth and that hasn't been possible. So they are looking to see if there is any loan funding that we could make available to them.
So this program was conceived to be in connection with facades. So the money would go to create improvements that would carry forward with the property. Obviously, we're in uncharted territory and the needs of our business community have shifted greatly right now to operations and getting by day to day, week to week. And the mayor's office certainly has no problem reconfiguring the program, but it's the aldermen that approve the program. And so we thought it best to go to the Board of Aldermen and request, number one, you know, would there be a deviation? Can there be a deviation for the use of funds in the program to go to operations in the midst of COVID? And number two, to get an idea of what the parameters would be, you know, what would be clearly, this would increase the demand on the program. Previously, you had to have a facade you were rehabbing to be eligible, so the demand was pretty fixed. Now, with the funds being open for operations and everybody being impacted recently, my guess is the demand for the funds will go up as well. So Sheila could tell us about the funds that we do have still on hand in the program and maybe a fair decision could be made because because if you decide to change the purpose of the program, again, there are going to be more businesses out there very willing to apply.
Thanks, John. Yeah, I believe we have a total of thirteen thousand dollars left in the program. I'm just getting trying to get the exact number. So so not a lot. Not a lot left over, but certainly something that, you know, could be helpful. They're only asking for between two and five thousand dollars.
We act on this now or do we need to wait for that paperwork?
Well, I would ask that the board act on allowing some flexibility in the program and then we can get you the paperwork and and then, I mean, you can review it or we usually, Corporation Council usually reviews all the documentation and then we'll make a recommendation to you guys.
On the the problem that I'm having is that you say from two to five thousand dollars. I mean, if we had an exact number, that would be helpful.
Yeah, they did. They did ask for five thousand dollars. This I did include in to be included in the packet, so I'm not sure what happened, but they are asking for five thousand. They have a maximum of five thousand that they can request. But, you know, I'm trying, I'm trying to I'm trying to look ahead and make sure that there's enough, we can impact maybe two or three businesses with the thirteen thousand that we have left. I think it's thirteen thousand, seven hundred dollars.
Okay, now, do we know where that is going to be spent at? I mean, is it?
Operations.
Yeah, yes, thank you, Diane. It's mainly in operations, be able to be up and running and and pay their, you know, pay their employees and it's just, it's just gap money. And they did also apply for but did not qualify for for PPE funds.
This is a facade program, though, I thought, probably saying.
That's what I said, yep.
So so I guess my discomfort would be making a decision without seeing what the recommendation would be coming forth from you guys at administration, because now when you open it up to operation, you're opening you're making everyone eligible.
I think, yeah.
We're starting to set precedent, so.
We may have Gino D. Giovanni on the line and I hope he is anyway. He can really maybe explain, but yeah. Of course, yeah. First setting precedent, but unusual time.
Hello?
Hi, Gene.
Yes, I'm here.
Yeah, just want to explain to the Board of Aldermen what you'd be using the five thousand dollars for.
Yeah, so so being a social club, we're located right next to Holy Rosary Church, obviously. So we applied for the Paycheck Protection Program and we were denied because of our employees that we that we don't have. We're basically a membership. The people that volunteered, the people that work there volunteer their time. I also went to try to apply for the Economic Injury Disaster Law. We were denied that because we don't have ownership. It's owned basically by the members of the organization. So I talked to other organizations as well. We kind of fell into no man's land that, you know, that they kind of forgot through that COVID programs. So we're trying to just bridge the gap until we're allowed to open. The state still has us closed for our banquet hall facility and the state still has us closed due to our our liquor sales as well. We don't sell food, so, you know, we'll have dinners once in a while, but obviously we can't have them inside the facility. So, you know, we're kind of stuck, you know, in a hard spot between now and when Governor Lamont kind of gives us the okay to open back up. We were supposed to open up on the seventeenth of July and that kind of got pushed back now because of the flare ups across the country, kind of put back that phase three plan. So I I've I filled out thousands and thousands of applications for every federal program, state program. And we're incorporated. We're not a five oh one C three. We're not a nonprofit. We've been incorporated since nineteen thirty-one. So that might be part of the. So that might be part of the issue because we have a board. But those are things that, you know, we never came across in the long history that we have in the city. So we kind of fell between the cracks for most of the programs that were offered for other businesses since we're not a sole proprietor and we don't have any employees. We're basically membership owned, you know, without a CEO, more or less. So we kind of fell through the, you know, through the crack. So we were kind of hoping if the town would, you know, would accept the application, obviously for the term that was provided in the packet that we sent in and see where we can go from there. I mean, once we start to open up, we'll, you know, we'll make our revenue back, but right now we've had zero revenue since Governor Lamont's stay home, stay safe issue on the 16th of March. So we're in a tough spot and we've been, uh, I'm sorry.
I think that.
Mr. President?
Yes, go ahead. Tony?
Question for Gino. So the funds that you're asking are really just to help pay utilities, keep guys paid? Just keep the place afloat till you can open again?
Yeah, so, so, yeah, so we asked for the $5,000 loan so that we could keep our, you know, basically our lights on until the state allows us to get open. We don't have savings at all left in our account because we've been using our savings since March 16th to carry our costs all the way till now. We were hoping that we would be able to open up on the 17th of July for part of Phase 3, but with Governor pushing that back now, we're, we're looking for a lifetime, a lifeline, you know, just to keep us afloat after, you know, being in business since 1931.
Understandable. And, you know, if I understand the loan program, it's actually a loan base to help people address any issues in the front of their building. Fix it up, brick, mortar, et cetera, things like that, correct?
That's what it, that's what it is currently.
Right.
Correct.
I'm just trying to understand something. Before, I'd just like to close with, you know, Gino and Alderman, Alderwoman, I agree with you. It opens up a can of worms here for other businesses. And Gino, I just want you to know that some years ago, I used your facility for a firehouse members function. And I thoroughly respect your guys' places and where it stands in our community. You guys have been there for a long time and have been to many events there. And I'd hate to see it closed because of something like this, as would a lot of people. But I just like, I'm expressing that lending that money for that purpose would really open us up a lot, businesses that we just don't have. So I'm just expressing a thought. That's, that's really it.
Let me say that I learned a little more information from hearing sort of the description as to why the funds are needed. It might be possible at the board's direction to retool the program so that it specifically can aid businesses that fall in the same gaps, right? That fall in between the same cracks that this business is falling through. So maybe, and again, we would have to tool this up. It may take a day or so, but if you've been denied from other programs, if you're clearly an established Ansonia business and you have certain criteria you could prove, or for whatever reason, you could also show that you've been denied because you're just not what, right, those programs are aimed to do. Then we could provide assistance in that limited scenario. That we aren't, that way we aren't piling on assistance where it could be saw elsewhere, but we're addressing our community businesses that just don't have anywhere else to go. I could see that being equitable and a way of reducing the eligibility, reducing the demand in a way that makes it fair to apply and has a purpose apart from what the government already.
I also think it might, it might be a good idea to just retool it anyway because I'm not so sure facade loans are as appropriate right now in this climate and moving forward. It's, it might be something, might need to be changed. So hopefully, this board will agree to do that and we can.
You know, a closing thought is if, if we don't help our, our people here that have been here for so long that helped us through all these years, after they exhausted all ends, they got no one left to turn to, we got to be able to help them somehow, some way. So I think we explore every option possible to make it fair for everybody to get something to try to help them along, whatever way we can.
Hey, guys.
Personal thought.
This is Alderman, Alderman Blackwell here. To me, this all sounds great. Let's help everybody we can. But the reality of it is, is we can't. How do you expect us to help businesses that come forward that are in this position? Let's just say at $5,000 apiece. We don't know what the economy is. We don't even have enough money for last year's budget and we're already talking about helping out businesses. We can't even help ourselves. That's one of the problems I have with government. They can't help themselves, but they want to help everybody else. The problem is, is that we don't know where COVID is going. Are these businesses going to end up, is this going to go on for another nine months where these businesses end up folding up? And we lent out $400,000 that we can't recoup now. Where do we go from there? These are just things that we have to think about before we just go ahead and approve this right now. I would suggest we table it, talk about it further and see where it goes from there.
Dollar point.
John or Sheila, where does the funding come for this? Is this, this isn't a city credit line, is it?
No, I believe, well, John can explain better, but I believe it came from some savings that the city had quite a while back, maybe 15 years ago.
In the economic development, there were, there were savings realized. A position that was vacated midway through and some other projects that didn't go forward. Those funds were turned into the seed money for this program and it's gone from there.
So with the $13,000 that's there, obviously, if we were to, as Dave is saying, put more into that pot, that's obviously up to the city to come up with that money. And then we're essentially be, we're the creditor in this case. And to Dave's point, I don't know in terms of creditworthiness and all this other stuff, if the city's in a position to do that, you know, in a bigger scale, but.
So could I ask one question to the board? So the program, under the program, would the qualifications for the program be like Masonry reporting thing or something on the front of the building? Is that how the program is set up for? Is that the technical description?
The existing program is to make improvements to the facade that are permanent in nature. So they would carry forward with the building regardless of who the tenant is. At least that was what its original conception was and what it's been doing up until now. So, you know, now, obviously, the discussion within COVID, is there a better use of funds?
Right.
But if you can make, if there is an improvement you could make with the facade of that building that offsets other costs for you, I don't know if you're in that sort of situation at all. That makes it a lot easier, certainly.
Yep. Yeah, so I have a couple ideas for that. So I could, we could, you know, see what the board's outcome is and we probably could do something in that, you know, to fit that description to make it more, you know, efficient for the city and for us at the same time. So we could, we could work with it.
Well, John, even if, John, even if we put some, something in place to temporarily change the program, as you said, due to these, these weird times, I don't know if it would be a permanent change, but if we said, hey, for six months, it may just be, you know, that lifeline or, you know, that, that, you know, that, that, you know, life preserver, so to speak, that we throw to businesses to do that. You know, again, we'd have to fairly do that across, you know, other, other, other businesses that may be in the same position that Gino is in.
Yes.
Otherwise, non-eligible businesses is how I'm sort of seeing it in my head. But obviously, it's a good point. There are, there are new risk factors that come in play, right? Because given the whole environment. So it's really a question, you know. You know, if you're worth it, and for us, you know, certainly from the mayor's office, we think even if you'd say, okay, well, if you expend this, this sum of money in the program to help the businesses, you run the risk of not recouping. I think the mayor's office would say at this point, at this stand age, as we're sitting here, it is worth it. Because there's never been a situation like this and you have these businesses that have been here forever. But not for this ridiculous situation we all find ourselves in, there wouldn't be this extraordinary need to make it through another month. So I think from the mayor's office point of view, we would have no issue if we took the existing amount in the program and used it as a lifeline. Even if it wasn't repaid, given the situation, it still would be worth it to help our businesses hang on. That would not be a normal business decision, but given where we are. But we're not talking, of course, on adding on to the program. We're talking about using the existing resources that are sitting there.
Can I just, can I just, sorry, Sheila, can I clarify? Dave, you had mentioned like up to like $400,000 or something along those lines. They mentioned earlier, there's like $13,000 that's still sitting in this pot, you know, for funds that they would look to distribute, not, not anything, you know, in additional to that.
It's a revolving, it's a revolving loan fund. Unfortunately, some of the loans were made a long time ago and those folks have not paid us back. And some are paying back diligently. But I, but I want, I just want to say to the board that I want, you know, there's a lot of things wrong about government. Dave Blackwell is right. But one of the things is we're not, government tends to be inflexible. And I, and I would urge the board to rethink this revolving loan account and to make it more flexible. And I don't think we should be in the business of dictating facades and how we want, you know, that's for planning and zoning. I don't know that that's, that's critical right now. Right now, we should be in the business of, you know, helping to support, bolster up our shore up, if you will, our business community.
Oh, and I'm 100% in support of that, Sheila. But, you know, to that point, we are a government agency. We're not a bank.
Or a charity.
Or a charity.
Government's got to help private development. Got to work hand in hand.
Agree. It's going to be a balance.
Why don't we do this along the same lines of what Tony said earlier? Why don't we see what John and Sheila can come up with in terms of the parameters of the program and put that up against the old program and see where we are? Obviously, you know, doing it tonight's not really feasible, but if we can have something on the agenda to do going forward, I'm open to at least seeing it and seeing if there's a better use of that money under certain parameters.
And any program like that should be, you know, advertised. We're very lucky. Gino, thanks for sharing the hardship you guys are going through. You know, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
I know, you know, Ansonia is lucky to have so many social clubs and I imagine that, you know, as well, lots of folks are going through the same, the same kinds of hardships too. So, you know, we just need to make sure that whatever program we do is being advertised and it's, you know, there's equity, equitably distributed. You know, we had a long conversation in our budget about picking winners and losers as far as recreation programs and things like that. So we need to make sure, you know, that we're considering all Ansonia institutions and organizations equally.
I get that, but my problem is, is that we just voted to move money so that the finance department can get their line straight. So we're already short and we giving away money.
No, but this, but this is a revolving loan fund that's specifically set up for businesses. It's nothing new. It's something we've had. We're just talking about maybe restructuring the term, you know, the limit.
Mention of this, make it onto the street and to be invested in businesses. My guess, what we're saying is maybe we should be investing that money in a different way right now, given COVID. Because there's no doubt, you know, we want that money to be out there doing good work for the business. That's why it was budgeted for, you know, that's why the program exists. To get out there and to enhance the business community in a way that helps our business base, our tax base. Maybe now with COVID, helping them survive in the first place is more important than a facade. And maybe that's a temporary thing. Hopefully, it's a temporary thing, right? But I would.
And we're not looking for, we're not looking for the donation. We're, we filled out the application to apply for the loan, obviously with terms and to pay it back. We're not looking for it as a grant. I don't know if I was clear about that.
Mr. President?
I, oh, but this is something I'm going to abstain from because I have a business. I was denied and so I can't even vote on this. So I will.
I mean, we usually give out, we give it out on a rolling basis. So whoever applies and we have money and it's, and it's eligible, we give it out. So I don't know. Not sure.
Mr. President? Two items. First, I'd like a closing statement to maybe move this on and Diane, hand her hand up to say something for quite some time. Diane, please take the floor.
No, I was just going to say, I'd like to make a motion that we table this conversation until the administration comes back, gives us their idea of what it is they will do. And then we have further discussion, have a time to look at it. And then we make our decision at our next meeting.
Okay.
Motion's been made in second, Mr. President. I call for a vote.
Who's the second?
Can I have a discussion, please?
Who is the second?
Oh, God.
Tony was the second. I didn't see that.
Mr. President, I had more things, I don't know when I had it before we voted, unfortunately.
I haven't voted yet.
We, we formed a sustainability committee to look for the sustainability of the city and maybe the businesses in it. Why don't we take this, roll it over to the Sustainability Committee to kick around and come some ideas and bring it back to the board so we can move on with tonight's agenda?
Diane? I think Dave Blackwell was trying to talk to.
That's okay. I agree with Tony. Let's, let's move on and I would just like to let all the aldermen know that instead of waiting an entire month to vote on this, because this is a pandemic and businesses are struggling, maybe we can get together for a special meeting and address this once, you know, things are decided.
Take it to the Sustainability Committee. Let them workshop it.
Just a more quick point for me. I don't know if John and Sheila know this offhand, if you could, in your, in your presentation, are these funds restricted or, you know, for the point of, you know, there's budget shortfalls? Is this, is this a general fund bucket? Are we able to appropriate these funds to go, go to general fund or are these restricted? So something, you know.
These are restricted to businesses and economic development funds. They're.
There you go.
They don't lapse back. The program continues.
It's revolving. It's a revolving loan fund.
We had a motion in a second. Tony, are you repealing that motion?
Suggestion. Diane had the motion.
Oh, sorry.
And I think Tony's, I'll rescind my motion and let Tony make the motion regarding the Sustainability Committee.
Thank you, Diane. Then, Mr. President, I'd like to make the motion. We take this issue, roll it over to the Sustainability Committee, workshop it and bring it back to the attention of the board at the next meeting, regular meeting.
I think that time is of the essence, so I think we're going to have to get this out before then.
Very well, we can schedule a special meeting if needed to address the board on what we come up with.
Second.
Second by Alderman Strowman. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? One abstention? Tips? Any other abstentions?
Chicago.
In Rivers. I thought that was going to be like a two-minute. Anyhow, that was fun. Thank you, guys.
I want some info on how to become a member, Gino.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
I do have a, I have to make a statement. I think that whenever, whenever we have a situation as such, where something new is brought to our attention, I really think that we should refrain from having the people who apply or whatever come to our meeting and talk without us first having dialogue and talking about it. I felt like I was put in a position because now you have this gentleman who has come to us, said all the stuff that he wanted to say. Now we know he's going to go back. I'm just saying, he's already said about operations. He knows about being the facade. That's not what he originally wanted, but now if I were him, right, so I'd go back now and change it so that I could get that $5,000 for the facade. But I'm just saying, I just, we need to have our own conversations before we bring in other people into our conversation. My statement. That's it.
Thank you. Alright, so also under new business, we have the item number two, the Police Department Tech Committee procurement letter. We probably scared off all the people from this committee in this, in this time here. That was from the Technology Committee, made up of. That was from the technology committee, made up of Chief Cota, Jared Heon and Mike Metzler. Are any of them here?
This is Jared Heon, I'm here.
Alright Jared, I'm under the impression that, that the chief was on a call, so are you gonna, you can explain this briefly?
Yes, the chief called me. He had to step out for an emergency in town. So if there's any questions, you know, I'm willing to address anything that you may have. Basically, what this is, is a package to get us operational at the new 65 Main Street facility. It does encompass a ton of the stuff for the police, but it also puts the base of the network for the entire building in there. We've worked diligently, weekly Zoom meetings over the past, basically three months to try and come up, plan for this. We've solicited everything we possibly can, utilizing our regular vendors, state contract. And anything that we can come up with to try and save some money. We do have some incentives tied to this. We do expect us to come in slightly lower than where we're at now in these. But until we get commitment to engage in these contracts, final number not be determined. So we put our best foot forward with everything. We think this is a solid plan. Multiple things in here rely on others, so it's proposed to you as a full package. And anywhere where we could cite a state contract or a reason for why we have selected. That type of technology, we've included in the letter and put it forward for your consideration.
Do you have an estimate on, on, it's okay if you don't, but on what we would save by doing this as one big package? You'd mentioned there's, there's an incentive to doing this all at once.
Yes, I was contacted last week by Cisco, who provides most of our data and network equipment. That there's some incentive and I was able to get them to go back to all the recently purchased. Equipment that we've had as well. They're going to give us a free year of support with that. Are, one of our other vendors has stated that if we do this all concurrently and not piecemeal it. That there would be approximately $4,000 to $5,000 of savings on the various radio equipment. And then other things in there, quite frankly, without the go ahead, we haven't been able to get firm prices on yet. So we've got estimates that we think will be worst case scenario, so we hope to achieve some savings on those.
Okay, so overall, it says the committee is requesting the Board of Aldermen to allow the. Ansonia Police Building Committee in cooperation with city's finance department to purchase the selected items. From the designated contract lists. And there was 13 total items on there.
Okay, I have a question. Is this, is this already in their budget?
John, do you want to take that or would you like me to?
I'm in terms of the, how it falls into the PD budget?
Yes.
So we're working diligently with the chief, the architect. To stay on track with the city's 65 Main Street project budget. So this does fall within the budget and we are tracking line by line with these expenses as we move forward. To ensure that we stay within budget for the completion of this project.
I was under the impression that this is part of the three and a half million dollar. Issue that we dealt with two weeks ago that included other things, soft costs.
Exactly.
And these are the soft costs.
That's precisely right, Alderman Pips.
So I'm comfortable with it, going ahead with it, you know, we're, we're, we're on the down slope now. I don't think we have a lot of choices. And I think we have good people making the decisions. And I only had one question when I was reading over the prospectus. Because there was a reference to you've got to do some stress testing on the roof before you put an antenna out there. What did that mean, Jared?
That may be the structural for the tower on Wakely Avenue. We're installing new microwave communication equipment for our radio systems to connect up to Prendergast School. And they, they require, because we're putting in new microwave dishes, the ones that are up there have been up there since 2006. They have to be repointed because they're directional. The contractor may require what's called a structural engineering study. To be performed if there's a grave difference in the specification of the dishes. And that's basically for the structural sustainability of the tower.
Do you see any problem with it personally?
No, actually, I've had lengthy conversations with American Tower. We've been partners with them for numerous years, back to 2000 when we put it up there. We actually have free rights for space on the tower, so we don't pay rent, which is a home run for the city. And he said, as long as it looks like a one for one replacement, which it does. It should not need a structural. That would be bottom line savings for us. However, we can't determine that until we engage our vendor who's going to be doing the replacement. To put the application into American Tower. So I had to budget it as a worst case scenario, Mr. Pips.
The only other question I had was I know the reference to the elite time for the, I guess the furniture people. I think it was 12 to 14 weeks after placement of order. And I also saw a reference that you still have expectations of. Opening the police department in the end of November's. Are those two dates and timelines still accurate?
If you're referring to the console furniture in the dispatch center, is that the furniture?
The 4D people.
That's going to be the next communication over and I know that I'm covering for the chief here, but. I was not intimately involved with the vendor on that discussion. But he did indicate to me when we spoke earlier this week, actually yesterday. That if it was approved around July 1st, that we would be on, on point to meet the timeline for a move in. So what we're trying to do with technology and with the furniture is pre-deploy it, get it in. And kind of be running the police department out of both buildings to make sure all the equipment's steady and everything's working. And then physically do the move on a date that we determine once everything's been stabilized. And just so you know, there is equipment that's being brought over from Two Elm Street. Some recent switches that we've purchased, some chairs that were recently purchased. And most of the personal desktops and telephones that are existing at the PD are going to be picked up and brought over to 65 Main. All the stuff that we're purchasing is just things that we need in addition. And things that we need to keep both places running at the same time. Because quite honestly, a hot cut over is just not practical in this situation.
We have a motion to approve this.
Can I ask a question though? Mr. President, is that, do you, you need a, we need a bid waiver and then a motion to approve all 13 line items? Can we do that in a single motion, John?
Well, I don't think all of, all of them were not requiring bid waivers. It was only the ones that were off this date list, I believe, right?
Yeah, we'll only move on the ones requiring the bid waiver. Those are the only ones that need to be authorized.
We would ask that you include in the motion that you give us authorization to utilize the state contracts that we referenced and then the other ones for bid waiver.
Sorry to drag this meeting out. Jared, for the benefit of the public. I'm not a big fan of, of bid waivers generally. Can you just give a quick justification on why, why we should approve a bid waiver here?
So I did on, anyone that didn't list a state contract, I tried to list it in the communication so you could see that. Most of them are because they're existing vendors in our current building. That we have to keep operational and in communication with the new building. So most of them that we decided to utilize is because they currently support us. And they're going to carry over and continue to support us in the future. But most of the high ticket numbers that are in there, Alderman Razzlin, we utilized any Connecticut state contract that we possibly could. And mo, and anybody else in there is because they're our regular city vendor. For example, Certex, our fiber provider, they put all the fiber in for the city. They maintain our fiber. We wouldn't have someone else come in and get in the middle and then have a finger pointing. You know, if something goes wrong. So everything in there, we did try and utilize state contract for the high ticket numbers. Anything else is because they're usually current vendors and, you know, the city's used them and we're comfortable with them. And we have to be able to keep our operation running from both locations.
Clarifications.
If there's any one specifically, I mean, I can address each one of them specifically if you have, you know, a specific example of them. Of which one you're wondering about. You know, I could definitely go in a little further with you if you want.
That's alright, thank you.
So we have a motion to approve this as, as one unit. Utilizing the state lists where possible and, and granting them the permission to work for the city finance department to select these items.
I'll move.
Motion by Alderman Pips, second by Alderman Cassetti.
One point of discussion, do you want to, Bill, do you want to amend to include waiver when stated?
Sure.
Okay. So it's clear, so we can, they're, they're free to waive on like communication one, communication one, three, and whatever else is where it states waiver.
You got that, Trish?
Here's, here's what I've written down. Move to, move to waive the bidding process where requested for the police department tech items. And utilize state contract wherever possible. Is that, is that it, Jared?
That would be accurate, thank you.
Thank you. That's it.
That's exactly how it came out of Bill's mouth too.
Yeah, boy, word for word.
Alright, so we have a motion in a second. Was the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Extensions. Alright, thank you. Jared will keep you on the hotspot, even though I understand you're, you said you weren't intimately involved in this, but maybe you can help out. The second one is from the chief. This is regarding the furniture, yeah, weapon storage. The record storage, evidence. And this is all, this is John, correct me if I'm wrong, this is all, as Bill stated, part of what we voted on last month.
This is all part of the $15 million budget for the 65 Main Street. And I will also say that the furniture contract comes in under the amount allocated for it within the budget. So we actually have a savings of $5,000 that will be diverted to project contingency. So again, we're keeping very close track of all the lines here. And I'm happy to say that, you know, we're running close to where we, we need to be on all of them.
And I'll just add too for that, that a lot of this includes purpose-built furniture for the specific reasons of record keeping. They're called high-density cabinetry, et cetera, that we have not had. So everything's been utilized in conventional filing cabinets. So we actually are improving on efficiencies. And this is all purpose-built furniture that's under state contract that the chief has worked diligently on specifying out for the building. Along with the building committee.
Okay, so this is similar to the other one. Chief says, requesting the permission for the Board of Aldermen to allow the police department building committee in cooperation with the city. Finance department to purchase the selected items from their designated contract list. Do we motion to approve that?
I'll move.
Motion by Alderman Yaman, second by Alderman Spigola. All in favor? Posed. Extensions. Thank you, Chief Heon for your, your help with, with explaining these.
I'd like to just also thank the Aldermen. We, we were under kind of a crunch timeline to get these things in to try and meet the deadlines and. Our committee met regularly and the building committee. My father is on the phone. He's muted, but he is on the phone. He just texted me. Also wanted to thank everyone for their support with the building committee and everything that's been done so far. So you'll be proud of it. I know some of you recently toured it. And once we finish, everyone will be very proud to, to call it ours.
Alright, so the next two items on there actually aren't new business items. Those were. Those are documents that are related to the two communications. So moving on to old business, I don't know why this is on here, but the Parks and Rec ordinance, we voted on it at our special meeting on. June 15th. This was after the public hearing. We, we voted that through 13 to zero. So that, that's taken care of, so we don't need to address that. So that takes us to executive session, right, right on time, according to John Marini.
Resolution number two. Did we talk about that? You and Joe Jowen put it in.
Yeah, we, I kicked that off the, the agenda at the beginning, right after roll call.
Oh, okay.
So we're going to move to executive session. Motion to.
So.
Oh, actually, yeah, go ahead, John.
Just explain for those of us, for those in the audience that haven't seen an executive session on Zoom before. And that may be participating, what's going to happen is we're going to create a breakout room. I'm going to send all of the Aldermen and for the purposes of records, myself, Kim from Finance and Sheila O'Malley to the breakout room. We will then, I will then come back and if there's anyone that would like to participate. In the session for the two blight hearings we have, one of which is for 65 Garden. And the other is for Willow Street. You could let me know at that time and I'll divert you over to the breakout room. So the Aldermen will go ahead and have their vote to go into executive session and then I'll start to move ahead with the breakout room.
Make a motion to go into executive session.
Second.
Motion by Rivers, second by Alderman Strowman, Alderman Strowman, all in favor?
Aye.
Not allowed to vote against this, so, alright, go John.
Is there anyone for the executive session for 65 Garden Street? Let me just get your, anybody else for 65 Garden Street or just you?
61 Garden Street.
What's that?
61 Garden.
Sorry, 61. Is it just the Jackson?
Yes, Jackson.
And healthy round tree.
And healthy round tree.
Okay, great. I'll send you over. Okay, great. I'll send you over.
Mr. Maloney.
Hello?
Yes?
Would you mind muting your sound? That's awesome. It was giving a lot of feedback. Thank you.
Just like that, we're back.
Are we back?
We are.
It doesn't be stuck in there forever.
I like it. Josh is muted. So was Tony. That was Diane and Bill. Joe, you guys are all muted. You mute when you come back.
All right, Terrence. Take it away.
Motion to come out of executive session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both? All right. Turn to regular session. We have three items. On the item number one, purchase of thirty-five North Main Street, the SHW Pandal property for purpose of demolition or remediation.
Motion.
Second.
What's the motion?
You gotta make the motion authorize the mayor to stop.
Here, I'll help you. Motion to authorize the mayor to purchase and the purchase and sale agreement. And motion by Momo and second by Strowman. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? All right. Item number two. The issue of sixty-one Garden Street blight lien. Motion to authorize release of lien subject to five-year residency requirement.
Make your motion.
Motion by Roslin, second by Cassetti. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Stained.
Extension, Jamin. And the item of number three, twenty-two to twenty-four Willow Street. Motion to... As discussed in executive session.
Second.
Made the motion?
Joe.
Okay, Alderman, yeah, I'm gonna do the second.
Chicago.
Alderman Rivers, all in favor?
Aye.
Extensions. All right. Favor part. Motion to adjourn.
Chicago.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second. Motion by Rivers, second by Strowman, all in favor?
Aye.
Nobody against that one either. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Are you gonna be around tomorrow, Joe?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm gonna give you a call any particular time you're available.